Call the meeting to order if you could please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Good evening and welcome to this special school committee recognition night. We're so glad to see so many people here and so many wonderful students and people from our community being recognized for their special deeds and good work in our community. And we will now be led in prayer by Mrs. Fagan.
Lord, as we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and mercy and ask your blessings on all our deliberations. We thank you for this opportunity to be of service to our community and to the young people entrusted to our care.
Thank you, Mrs. Fagan.
Mr. Greenus, Mr. Fiore.
Present.
Mrs. Fagan's present. Mr. Laura.
Present.
Mr. George.
Present.
Mr. Viera.
Present.
Chairman DeMello.
Present.
And Mayor O'Connell.
Present. Thank you, Mrs. Fagan. Okay, so we begin our recognition with a very special guest. Mrs. Mary Bliss will be recognized by school committee chairperson Gregory DeMello and Secretary Christine Fagan.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening to everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight, not only to celebrate the occasion of celebrating Mrs. Mary Bliss, but all our wonderful students, our staff that are being recognized tonight, and community members. So I hope you have a great night. I know you're gonna have a great night, Mrs. Bliss, right? This award comes from the entire school committee, my colleagues, the mayor. It's a certificate of recognition. It's to Mrs. Mary Bliss for your commitment to excellence and outstanding contributions to our school community granted today, March 30th, 2022. I would have read this in Latin, but I didn't do very well in Latin. I'm sorry, Mrs. Bliss.[156.29][156.29](Laughter). But I shared with Mrs. Bliss that my mom is 94 years old and was a teacher of 35 years, still with us, and, you know, you share in, I don't know, special moments as educators for all those years and what you've influenced in the lives of so many students and so many people. So thank you very much from the bottom of my heart, and our colleagues, and Mrs. Fagan would just like to say a few words.
Yes, I just want to say one thing. I did not grow up in Taunton, so I didn't have the pleasure of having you as a teacher. But I said, I asked my husband, I said, "Did you know, Mrs. Bliss?" He said, "Oh, yes, I did. She was a giant of the times and still is." So I just want you to know that he was very impressed with you. And I want to thank you also because all the people that you've touched, you know, I'm sure that you just had a wonderful influence on people and people will never forget that. So congratulations.
You're welcome.
And before I sign off, I have two other special folks I'd like to introduce that have some special awards for you too, Mrs. Bliss. I'm gonna start off with our representative Carol Doherty. If she could please approach to the podium.
I'll take a lock of her hair.[244.62][244.62](Laughter).
Get some scissors.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair DeMello and Christine Fagan. It's so delightful for me to be back here among my colleagues and especially among the young people and their families who are receiving recognition this evening. This is probably one of my most favorite school committee activities of all time. So congratulations to the families and to the students particularly for being here and being recognized. I hope you know why you're here. It's to be recognized. I hope that wasn't a secret, Superintendent. So thank you very much. I was a colleague of Mary's when she taught here at the high school. I was teaching and then a guidance counselor at the Edmund Hatch Bennett School. I won't tell you how many years ago. That's between Mary and myself. And we shared many things as educators, but when we think about students, I think that Mary and I both think about a favorite student, Robert Easterbrooks, who now is an adult living in Maine, an extraordinarily bright young man at the time. And so I had him in the third grade and Mary had him in high school. And we were both invited to his wedding, and so it was something that we share as teachers of an extraordinary student and other extraordinary students as well. So I'm here to present a citation from the House of Representatives, if I might just a moment, read it. "Be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Mary Bliss in recognition of her 100th birthday and a life dedicated to public service, including 40 years, 40 years of teaching in the Taunton Public Schools. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors." The citation is signed by our Speaker of the House, Ron Mariano, and myself, Carol Doherty, State Representative. Mary, this is so delightful to be here and to be invited to do this. So congratulations, another 100 years.
Thank you, Representative Doherty. And one last presentation, Mrs. Bliss, if you don't mind. We have the Dean of the Massachusetts Senate, Senator Mark Pacico. Senator Pacico.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, to all the award recipients that are here this evening that will be recognized later. We want to congratulate all of you for being here, to the mayor, members of the school committee, and everyone in the Bliss family that has joined us this evening, and so many others that are down in the Carolinas that will be watching the tape from this evening with pride. Let me just say, unbelievable, Mary Bliss. I was in high school when Mary Bliss was at the old Taunton High School, and she was the type of teacher that was so special because the students, no matter whether you had Mary Bliss as a teacher or not, you knew who she was and you loved her because of that smile and her personality and her outreach. She's just an extraordinary person, an extraordinary human being. You're welcome. Welcome so much. She is (laugh) and as you can see, the reason why everybody loved her is because of her tremendous sense of humor. I asked her a few moments ago before the presentation started, I said, "Mary, tremendous longevity, is there a secret to that longevity?" And she looked at me with a twinkle in her eye and a smile, and she said, "Don't eat your vegetables." And then she told me, and then she told me a true story because I asked her about her interaction with students. And she would say, when she began her classes, she would tell the students, because she, language arts teacher, you know, also quite a history buff herself, would say to the students that there's two things you're gonna learn from me in this class, how to give a compliment and how to receive one. How to give a compliment and how to receive one. Wouldn't that be nice to have more of that today? And she, just a special lady. So I am here, Mary, to provide a Massachusetts Senate set of resolutions in your honor that was adopted on March 14th, 2022, signed by the President of the Senate, attested to by the Clerk of the Senate, and it was my honor to have it offered on your behalf congratulating Mary Bliss on her 100th birthday. Whereas Mary Bliss was born on February 21, 1922, and celebrated her 100th birthday on February 21st, 2022. And Mary attended the University of Vermont, from which she graduated in January of 1943, having studied Latin, French, and Classical Studies while also earning a degree in Greek and Roman Mythology Studies. And whereas Mary and her husband William were married in 1946 at the Sacred Heart Church in the city of Taunton, and they enjoyed 48 wonderful years of marriage and were blessed with five children, Mary Lynn, Sheila, Paul, who went to high school with me, Karen, and Michael. And whereas Mary began her career as a beloved schoolteacher at Westport High School in the town of Westport, and then Dayton High School in the town of Dayton. And in 1954, Mary's teaching career flourished when she began her tenure at Taunton High School in the city of Taunton, where she found her passion in teaching language arts, specifically Latin, French, and English as a second language, until her retirement in 1994. She also told me she had tried to retire 11 times before that. But she only had one party. All right. And whereas, and whereas Mary touched the lives of thousands of students in the greater Taunton area during these, during her tenure, many of whom continue to visit, call, and write her to this day, she told me she received 300 cards after the brief story in the Taunton Daily Gazette. And whereas Mary lost her beloved husband, William, in 1994, and now enjoys spending time with her family, including her seven grandchildren, five great-grandchildren, and two great-great-grandchildren. And whereas Mary has been a lifelong resident of the city of Taunton for the past 100 years and is known for her great sense of humor, as you can see, being displayed this evening, her ability to converse with anyone, and her passion for language and history. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Massachusetts Senate congratulate Mary Bliss on her 100th birthday. And I don't do that, this, that often, but on tonight's special occasion, I would ask you, as I provide this resolution to Mary Bliss, if you would join me. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Mary. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday.
Thank you so much. Back to Mayor O'Connell. Mrs. Bliss, thank you for being here with us.
Thank you all very much. I've been limited tonight, you know. Well, I guess I'll have to do it in the most of me.
All right, we have the microphone now.
Yeah. Thank you. No, no, I'm not, no, no.[892.62][892.62](Laughter).
Something in Latin? No? Okay.
Bad news for me. Good bad news for you.
We don't have enough time tonight.
All right. Thank you. Safe travels home.
Thank you very much. Isn't this something? We have to live to be 100, I guess.
The last time I saw Mother Bliss in person was at my high school reunion 10 years ago when she was only 90. And she was the last one off the dance floor.
Well, that is not hard to believe, Mr. Fiore. I'm sure a lot of people have some very funny and loving stories about Mary Bliss. So we're so pleased that she could be here with us this evening, and we thank her family for being here as well. So thank you. All right, so we'll, it's gonna be hard to top that, but we're gonna move on with our recognition. We now go to recognition of students in Taunton Public Schools, and we will start with Principal Burt Delaney. We'll recognize a student from Taunton Alternative High School.
I think I owe Miss Bliss homework, I believe, from a little ways back. So just get her out of here before she recognizes my voice, please. Thank you. Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, school committee. This is one of my favorite nights of the year. You've heard me say it before. Other than graduation, the recognition nights of students and staff is really something I look forward to because we get to, we get to honor, there's a lot of good going on. A lot of people don't talk about it. So tonight, I'm gonna talk about a very special individual. Daniel Rodriguez is a senior at Taunton Alternative High School. He goes above and beyond in everything that he does in school. He's an honor roll student who is described by his teachers at Taunton Alternative High School as determined. He sets high expectations for himself, and he goes about it in a very quiet way. However, in history class, Mr. Garcia says he's quite opinionated on the, on the recent politics in the world, which is good. Not only is Daniel a great student, he's a great role model for other students in our building. As a senior, you've heard me say it before, your building runs as good as your senior class. Daniel comes in every day quietly. He goes to his classes. He participates. He works hard, and he doesn't take shortcuts. But Daniel's story doesn't start over at the former Hopewell School, which we're taking up shop with this year. No, it doesn't start there. It starts back in Brazil where he was born, okay? Daniel came to the United States on his own three years ago. At the time, Daniel, and he will tell you, didn't speak very good English, but he was determined, and these are his words, "to learn the language, get into a high school, and get his diploma." Instead of me continuing to tell you his story, I'm gonna read a portion of an essay that he turned in for his senior English class earlier this year, and he gave me permission to read some of it, okay? So these are Daniel's words. "So here I am, at the age of 17, in search of a new life. This part of my life was not the easiest, but it was the one that made me grow the most. Unfortunately, I was caught up in some immigration paperwork. However, my uncle, who lived in Taunton, helped me get through that. After a few days of doing that on my own, I was able to communicate with my uncle in Taunton through a phone number that I had in my pocket. My uncle was able to arrange for me to get to Taunton. The trip up here was something I had never experienced before. As I was on my own, I was in an airport, there was gonna be three flights to get me to Boston. Because I was a minor, I had to have support on the plane and also in the exchange between the flights. At the Boston Airport, a man accompanied me to the exit gate where he waited for my uncle. Suddenly, I looked to the side, and there he came and gave me a hug. I think that was the most satisfying things in my life so far. My uncle helped me get to school, gave me a place to live, gave me a job, and most importantly, affection. I am so grateful for his life and for everything he has done for me. Today, I don't live with him, I live on my own, but I'm still around him learning more and more. In short, the bad, the difficult, and sad parts I went through helped me as a lot as a person. It made me appreciate things even more, opened my mind, strengthened my emotional side. Today, I have goals to meet, a lot to learn, and I'm prepared for it." As you can see, going above and beyond, Daniel does that in every aspect of his life. It's an understatement to say Daniel is living the American dream, as he told me. Nobody has handed him anything. This young man has worked for everything he's gotten to this point. That doesn't even talk about his schedule. Daniel goes to work in the morning before he comes to Taunton Alternative High School. Comes to school, has to tolerate me, which is, can be difficult, right there. That's what he told me, okay? When he leaves, his classes end at 6 o'clock at night. Daniel doesn't go home. Daniel goes to work. It's not a coincidence that I'm early in the ceremony tonight. Thank you, Mrs. Devine. Daniel has to go to work. That's Daniel. It gives me great pleasure and a true honor, and I'm humbled, to present to you Daniel Rodriguez. He goes beyond, above and beyond for the Taunton Public Schools every day. Daniel, congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Delaney. Now Heather Rose, a teacher at Mulcahy Elementary School, will recognize a student.
Hi, I'd like to present Abigail Castro. She is a fourth grade student at Mulcahy Elementary School. This year, she volunteered to be a member of our school's safety patrol. It was in that capacity that I first came to know Abby. I have a student in my kindergarten class who struggles with arrival and dismissal procedures. Abby took notice of this student early in the year and began to offer him special assistance. She has a caring demeanor and a natural aptitude for interacting with children. These qualities have made her an invaluable asset in facilitating my students' successful transitions at the beginning and end of each school day. Abby consistently goes above and beyond to assist him during these transitions. When he arrives, she ensures that he gets a breakfast, even when he says he doesn't want it, because she knows him so well, she's aware he'll most likely change his mind shortly after getting to class. She encourages him to use safe hallway behavior as she personally escorts him to class. She assists him with settling in and tells him to have a good day before she heads off to start her own day. At the end of each day, Abby comes back to my room to see if he needs help leaving the room to move to the dismissal area. Due to the special bond she's developed with him, she is often able to help him even when he refuses a teacher's assistance. She'll hold his hand and guide him safely to the dismissal area, and once they're there, she ensures he remains there. She even plays games with him like ice spy and rock, paper, scissors. These games serve to help him remain engaged and entertained during a time when he has to sit and wait patiently, which is very difficult for him. He thoroughly enjoys her entertainment and interaction, and he actually benefits from the social skills practice he gets when the other children around him join into Abby's games. One especially touching example of her kindness and generosity toward the student came on St. Patrick's Day, when the students were able to wear green. Upon arrival, my student wanted to participate, and seeing that he had nothing green, she offered him one of her own St. Patrick's Day beaded necklaces. He wore it proudly all day and told anyone around him that she was the one who gave it to him. Abby's calm and creative approach to the students' difficulties have helped him succeed this year. I'm so touched by her dedication to him that I felt it was important to recognize her here this evening. Thank you for all you do, Abby.
Next, Principal Tara Gagnon from Galligan Elementary School will give a special recognition.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. Tonight, you're probably wondering, as an elementary school principal, why I have a, why would I have a high school student standing here? I'm about to tell you. I'm gonna be recognizing this young man, a senior at Taunton High School, for his hard work and dedication to a student at Galligan Elementary School where I am the principal. I have a student there who has struggled tremendously with complications in his own life. He was an angry little boy, shut down, very unwilling to process much with us as adults. We struggled to get him through and really wanted to give him the best and try to make the best of his days for him. We wanted to help him become a better student and to be a better citizen at Galligan. We knew he could reach his full potential, but he didn't know he could reach his full potential. We had exhausted so many different possibilities and ideas on how to help this young man turn around. And that's when Mrs. Craven, my assistant principal, called on the high school to see if they had any students who might be willing to volunteer as a mentor to our young man, who happened to love sports as much as my student did. Within a day, we received Trent Santos's name and all of his information. We contacted him and his mom and asked if he would be willing to help us by mentoring this young man. Ever since, Trent has been coming to Galligan every Thursday morning during his study block to engage my student in academics, shooting hoops outside when necessary, and talking about life. Trent has shown up every week, has been a true friend and a mentor to this little boy. As they made a connection, we began to notice him making lots of changes. He looked forward to seeing Trent every week and didn't ever want to disappoint him. As they connected over basketball, Trent wondered if my student would be able to go to one of his Friday night games at the high school. And that's where Trent's mom comes in. Lindsay Martin works for the Taunton Public Schools as one of our community facilitators. Once she agreed to have Trent mentor my student, she wanted to do more as well. I'm sure they spoke about this student during dinners at night, and one morning Lindsay called me at school and asked if it would be okay for her to reach out to Dad and to get permission to pick my little boy up and bring him to Trent's games on Friday nights with her family. Dad was agreeable and very thankful for the opportunity and thankful that we were all investing so much in his son. So Lindsay picked up my student.
How many times? Several games. Yeah.
Quite a few games. And brought him to the games with her own family. Both of these people have been instrumental in this child's turnaround and have become an inspiration for all of us at Galligan School. And on a side note, I'm gonna show my age. I apologize for that. I was actually Trent's principal at Hopewell School many, many moons ago, when he was kindergarten through fourth grade. So it's really great to have him come back to my new building and become very involved. Mrs. Santos has always been a very supportive, nurturing, and loving parent and has done a fantastic job with all of her children. So it is my pleasure to introduce to you Trent Santos and his mom, Lindsay Martin, and give them each an award for being outstanding citizens here in Taunton. You go up there, you shake their hands. Good job. Yeah.
Okay, Director of Student Services Kathy Perry and Guidance Counselor Carla Hands will recognize a Taunton High student.
Good evening, everyone. It is my honor tonight to recognize Abby Parcells. Never get tired of doing little things for others. Sometimes those little things occupy the biggest part of their hearts. This poignant and brief quote describes the actions of Abby Parcells. Abby is an eighth grader here at Taunton High School. She also attends the Cappuccioni Theater School. It is there that she met her friend Mary. I venture to guess that Abby is not aware of how her kind and thoughtful deed occupied the hearts of Mary and her parents, who came to join us tonight as well. Abby and some of her friends went out of their way to plan a very special girls' night out in honor of Mary's 17th birthday. It was this simple inclusionary gesture that prompted Mary's father to reach out to Superintendent Cabral. A strong leader gives to others and expects nothing in return. In a quote by Anthony Pompliano, "The fastest way to earn a great reputation is to help people." I approached Abby's teachers, and they were more than willing to tell me all about Abby. I'd like to share some of their thoughts with you this evening. The overarching theme is how impactful Abby's presence is to the other students in her classroom. "What great news," echoed Abby's business teacher, Mrs. Jackes. "Abigail is such a sweet student. I have Abby B Block, CTE Discovery. Abigail is a wonderful addition to our classroom. She comes into class every day, prepared to learn and eager to grow. She has a great calming presence and is respectful to all she encounters. She works well with all students and contributes her thoughts to class discussions." Abby's social studies teacher, Mr. McGaragall, thanked me for the opportunity to comment on Abby. Echoing the words of her other teachers, he would like to piggyback on the comments. "Abigail Parcells is an outstanding young lady. She's the kind of student and person that makes being a teacher gratifying, and I would like to take this opportunity to comment on her as a student. Abigail is an especially well-rounded student. Her passion for learning and her commitment to mastering the content delivered in class is an inspiration to both the students around her and the teachers in her classes. She desires to be successful in every capacity, and her drive and work ethic are ideal. Abigail is also not afraid to seek additional support and guidance when she's confronted with academic obstacles and is willing to do whatever it takes to get the most out of her educational opportunities. She has an inquisitive nature and is very detail-oriented, two of her finer qualities, which contribute to her success at school. Further, the pride she takes in her work and also her desire to assist others who have struggles are yet more evident in her being a model student. There are so many notable characteristics that enable her to be such a fine scholar that it can't be fully captured in this one written document." Abby's math teacher was very excited for Abby. "She's a wonderful student in my Algebra I honors class," said Mrs. Altman. I was going to call her by her maiden name because I had her as a student, so. "Abby is such a positive addition to our classroom. She's very sweet, determined, and hardworking. She demonstrates self-advocacy when she has a question, which is something that can be very difficult for students her age. This in turn has given her peers around her the confidence to do the same. I look forward to seeing all that Abby will accomplish throughout the remainder of the year." And finally, Abby's French teacher, Mrs. Mederos. "Abby is an amazing French student. She always comes to class with a smile on her face, ready to have fun, learn, and participate in whatever crazy activity I make them do. It has been such a joy getting to know her and watching her flourish in her second language. And wow, what an accent. Sometimes I want to stop and ask her, are you from Paris? Amazing pronunciation, and I can totally see her exploring the streets of France a few years from now and flourishing in everything she does. It is my honor to present to you tonight Abby Parcells."
Sarah Gibson, Taunton High School teacher, will recognize two groups of students at this time.
Good evening and thank you. Actually, if it's not too much trouble, I'm going to do number six on the agenda first, so that both the Pro Start teams can go back to back, so it kind of logically flows. Okay, so first this evening, I'd like to recognize a group of students, Skills USA. Skills USA recently competed at the district conference, and although it was virtual, these students received gold and silver medalists, so that means they were the top two in the district competition, and they will be going on to the state conference at the end of April to compete against other vocational schools in their prospective content area. So first, this evening, I'd like to recognize Mackenzie Cutting, who will be competing in architectural drafting, and received a silver medal at district and will be going on to the state conference. Second, I'd like to recognize M. Gannon and Felicia Dias, who will be competing in audio/radio. They received a gold medal at district, and they will be moving on to the state conference as well. I'm also recognizing tonight Torrin Hodgson, who will be competing in culinary arts at the Skills USA competition, and he received a silver medal at district. Also on the list are Leah Levek and Emily Keiker, who will be competing in television, radio, television production, and they received a gold medal at the district conference and will be competing at state. And last but not least, Samuel Schumacher and Alec Rigo, who received gold and silver medals respectively in medical math and will be competing at the state conference. And then not with us this evening, Darian Siambab, who will be competing in computer programming, and he received a silver medal at district. Thank you. Thank you again, different hat. These, this group of students competed recently at the state competition in Pro Start, and for those of you who don't know, Pro Start is a two-year curriculum and competition, and it's both in restaurant management and in culinary arts. Culinary arts is next on the agenda. But these group of students created a unique restaurant concept all on their own. It was a digital restaurant concept, and they spent months preparing a business proposal and marketing tactics. Jonathan won an award for his marketing tactic, critical thinking questions, and developing a menu, pictures, and presenting it to a panel of 16 judges, and they received second just recently at the state competition. So congratulations to Kaya Leonard, Tatum Domann, Jonathan Henderson, and Israel Cruz. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, now Chef Lee Howlett will recognize some culinary students.
Good evening, I have my sidekick here, Mr. Chef John Collins with us. Both Chef John and I are co-advisors for the culinary part of Pro Start. Unlike the former presenters, we think in small, little details, so I could tell you what my prep list is for tomorrow, I could tell you what we're having for lunch, so the kids that we have that are coming up are...
She's very emotional about this. We've worked very hard with the students. The students have dedicated a lot of mornings, afternoons, late evenings, working regularly, working hard and diligently to develop a menu and allow us to, within an hour, develop and create and plate elegant design, two appetizers, two entrees, two desserts, and present it to a panel of judges consisting of professional chefs, famous chefs, local chefs, and you know, it's just, it's been a great experience to work with these students. They're very dedicated, the food looks amazing, and it's, really speaks to work ethic. We, Chef Howlett myself, are formerly from the industry and working 80,000 hours in a week, and you know, people are like, oh, 40-hour work week, that's a nice part-time job, so you know, we're just, we're just very proud of them, so.
And we always say that teamwork makes the dream work.
Teamwork makes the dream work.
So we are...
It takes a village.
We are headed to DC. They had won first place.
In May, we will be going to DC for a week. They're going to compete against 48 other teams in the state. We were...
National.
No, in state, we were against 13 other teams. So we had a little bit of competition. They work together as a team, they fight together like a team, they wake up together as a team, they come at 10 o'clock at night and put together their mise en place as a team. 5:30, sorry guys. 5:30 tomorrow morning and 5:30 on Friday. Yes. So I just want to say from my...
From the bottom of our hearts, we're very proud of you all. So as state representatives of Massachusetts for the culinary Pro Start, we'd like to recognize Emily Robinson, Nolan Langley, Torrin Hodgson, Ethan Ross, and Milia Toran.
Okay, we love all our clubs at Taunton High School and all our programs, but I think we especially appreciate the culinary program and all the goodies they provide us, so thank you. Jessie McPhail from Taunton High School will recognize DECA students, which we've been doing a lot of lately.
Thank you, everybody. I'd like to also introduce my co-advisor, Linda Secatelli, who's going to be assisting me here, right?
Good evening.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your time, everybody. There's certainly a lot of good stuff going on here at Taunton High School. It's an awesome place to work, I got to tell you. So we've talked a little bit over the last few weeks, and there's been a lot of things going on, and we have a lot of things coming up, actually, for our national, international conference that'll be coming up in April, so there's a lot of preparation for that. But while we're preparing for competition, there's a lot of things that go on around it, such as raising money for muscular dystrophy, running our middle school DECA program that we're trying to, you know, really get off the ground, which has launched itself really well, and I think, hopefully at the next recognition meeting, we'll have some of those students here to meet you, and the advisors as well. Today, I'd like to recognize a few people. There were a couple of people that I wasn't able to recognize the last time, but very importantly, I'd like to recognize Jessie Shavz first. Come on up, Jess. Not only does Jessie have a great first name, which we always joke around, but Jessie is the vice president of the Taunton DECA Club, and at the very beginning of the year, we had had some challenges getting everything off the ground. The disconnect that we always, we always speak about regarding COVID and the pandemic and the break in the connection definitely impacted our momentum that we had rolling. And Jessie, and also Nicole Fisk, who couldn't be here today, the president and vice president, did a great job leading the team, and Jessie was instrumental in getting that mock districts, where we had over 100 students coming into practice, and I know some of you guys were judges for us and things, and he did an outstanding job getting that off the ground. So thank you very much, Jessie Shavz. Second, I'd like to recognize Nicole Drake. Nicole Drake, I know that she's familiar to the school committee and a lot of other teachers and faculty. She's definitely a positive student, has a lot of great things going on. One of the things that we talk about in my DECA club, as well as some of the baseball teams that I coach and things, is grit, and that grit is defined as that fortitude to persevere for long-term goals over time and not give up. And I'm going to share something about Nicole that I was impressed by. And Nicole, again, all the positives that you have going on in your life and things that are really good, there was a time where there was a couple of challenges academically, and our priority is school is first, then DECA, then everything else, but school is first, and where she made her priority, it was a very mature decision to put that priority first, focus on school, take a step back from her leadership role on the team, address that, and then came back when she was able to, and has since helped lead the team back to the momentum that we're starting to pick up. So I'm very proud of Nicole Drake and in all that she's done and all that she's going to do for the remainder of the year. Thank you, Nicole. I'd like to recognize Gabe Liskowski, Xavier Sandoval, and Condoleezza Dwyer. These three young people here have been instrumental in our team, and they are part of, a part of, or a sampling of, the future of our DECA team. And the things that we need to get done, there's assigned roles, and then there's things that people just need to pick up and do, just to get them done, and these guys have been there every time and always to help us get those things done. And very importantly, I'm going to be introducing another young man that you're familiar with, Hector Aponte, who started the TCAM Students Perspective TV show, Cable Access TV show, and he's going to be graduating this year, so what happens to that? So that's going to be passed on to these guys, and I think, am I correct, Gabe and Condi, you guys are going to be taking the leads on that, I believe, correct? So thank you very much, Condoleezza Dwyer, Xavier Sandoval, and Gabe Liskowski. I'd like to call up Talia Nogera and Hector Aponte. So these young people here are beyond impressive. And I know that you're familiar with these people. And if you were at the mock districts, mock states, rather, Talia Noguera was beginning her campaign in running for state officer. And what ended up happening is they won and ran an amazing campaign and, in front of 3,000 DECA students from across Massachusetts, delivered an amazing speech that rocked the entire audience. I know that many of you are familiar with campaigning and the efforts that it takes. And this is done in about a three-day period. And there's social media that's tied to it. There's talking to people face-to-face. And then there's those speeches, the one in front of 3,000 people and then the one in front of only 600 people, who are the voting delegates. And I was greatly impressed by Talia's efforts this year and did an amazing job and very proud to be able to recognize her for being able to represent Massachusetts DECA at the state level all of next year. Talia Noguera? So on the other side of that, we just came back from states and Hector Aponte was part of the team that helped run the Mass DECA State Conference. Now, last year, it was a virtual conference. It was the first time ever Massachusetts DECA had a virtual conference. I think it was the first time for a lot of things that had virtual events. And this year, it became live. So we were so grateful to be back in person, talking to people, and the joy of seeing people together. I know as advisors, we were grateful to see it. And like I mentioned before, and I'll share with all of you, hearing the laughs, you know, coming from the hallway of the kids, you know, just having an enjoyable time, actually being with people and meeting kids from other schools and around the state, real connections. The things that we were missing for the last two years was a blessing, to be honest with you. And Hector Aponte was part of the reason for the Mass DECA and the Mass DECA State Officer Team to put that together for everybody. And I think probably, in total for the weekend, you had about nine hours of sleep total. It was like three hours a night, maybe, with all the preparation and rehearsals. It's a big event and very proud of Hector Aponte for all that he's done all through the years, but especially this Mass DECA Conference. Thank you. Okay, I would like to recognize Taylor Doherty and Joey Kazloskis. So again, you don't know how it's going to go. Every year, you get a new team and you assign roles and you think it's going to be, you know, just A-A-B-C going down the line. It's going to be nice and easy. And you never know what's going to happen. School happens, events happen, challenges happen. And these two have really stepped up and taken leadership roles beyond their regular roles that they were assigned. And most recently, as many of you know, and we're grateful for all the assistance and help that all of the people in the community have offered us, we were number one in the country for the most money raised for muscular dystrophy through DECA. Okay? And we had raised $7,000 with the Miles for MDA event up on the track, which was a great feat. And then we slipped to number two. I think Richmond had taken it over and so that wasn't going to be good enough. So what happened is we've rallied. Over the last week and a half, I'm very proud to say that between Taylor and Joey and all of you in the community, we've raised another, an additional $4,000. So, and tomorrow's the deadline, okay? Tomorrow's the deadline. We're still waiting on two checks from two local banks. So hopefully those come through and we can actually go back to first place, which would be great. Because what happens is we get recognized at the International Conference in Atlanta at the Mercedes-Benz Stadium. And our students will be called to the center stage and recognized for their accomplishment for muscular dystrophy. So Joey Kazloskis and Taylor Doherty. Thank you. And the final person that I'd like to recognize is Mr. Ben Rabel. Ben is an eighth grader. And you can imagine what it's like as an eighth grader coming into this big high school and you've got like grown, you know, adult-looking people walking around you and things. And the intimidation factor. I was very proud that he joined DECA. I'm proud of anybody who's in eighth grade who joins DECA. Not only joined it, but stepped up to be a class representative and represent the eighth grade. So one of the things we do for communication is we have representatives for each grade level. That way, somebody from eighth grade doesn't feel nervous talking to a senior. They have somebody that they're familiar with. And so Ben took on that role. And more than that, he made a very profound decision, I would say. I would say a mature decision. He qualified for the state conference, which is not easy to do for anybody. But as an eighth grader, he made it to the... Some schools don't even have eighth grade in DECA, just to put it in perspective for you. And he made it to the state conference, yet he chose, and I respect this greatly, all right? But he chose to go to junior districts for his saxophone? Is that correct? Oh, for what instrument? The French horn. I'm sorry, I don't know my music. But for the French horn, okay? So he went to junior districts as an eighth grader and competed there, rather than go to the state conference. So I thought that that was a great decision by him. The state conference will be there for him next year, the year after, and whatever he chooses to do. But more than that, and the reason why I'm recognizing him is because he came to me after school, the end of classes, and he came up and he said, "Listen, I can't go, I'm not going to go, but could I help you on the day that you guys are leaving?" Because we had three buses to load. We had 25 cases of water that Talia was going to be handing out as part of her promotional stuff. We had a lot of stuff to get going. And it wasn't, I didn't ask, "Hey, anybody wants to help, please join in." He offered. And again, I think, in this day and age right now, I think that that's what we need more of, is somebody stepping up and taking the lead. And I think he's going to be a future leader for our DECA. You'll be hearing him a lot in the future, okay? Mr. Ben Rabel. Thank you, everybody, for your support and your time. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Math team advisors Tracy Menard and Allison Murphy will now recognize some pretty amazing students from the math team.
Good evening, I'm Tracy Menard, this is Allison Murphy. We're both math teachers at Taunton High School and we're co-advisors of the math team. We're honored here tonight to recognize the Taunton High School math team. The math team competes against 15 other Massachusetts high schools. And we compete at five competitions from October through March. This year, our team placed first in our division of six schools, making this the first time in 20 years that Taunton High School has been North Division Champions of the Southeastern Massachusetts Conference. It is also the highest-scoring year on record that we've had. And we ultimately placed third in the conference after leading through the first four meets.
This year's math team is composed of 20 students, grades eight through 12, eight of which are here today. We would like to recognize these students and their teammates for all of the hard work that they put in throughout the school year and their dedication to mathematics. They meet at least once a week to practice for an hour. The students that are here are Brendan Brown, Matthew Franco, Alani Murphy, Jack Palowski, Madeline O'Brien, Alec Rego, Samuel Schumacher, and Peter Yee. Alec, Sam, and Peter have been members for five years, a feat that's only been accomplished a handful of times in the last 12 years since the eighth grade has been here at Taunton High School. Good job. Also, during their five-year tenure, these students helped the team win the conference championship back-to-back in both 2018 and 2019. At the conclusion of this season, Samuel Schumacher was named the Dwayne Cameron Math League of the Year and earned a $100 scholarship. He was chosen out of the entire Southeastern Massachusetts Conference of Math Leagues of approximately 200 students. We are so proud of these students and honored to be their advisors. Thank you.
You've got to admire the math team. Few select students that can compete in math. We are going to move on to the recognition of staff in Taunton Public Schools. And we will start with Principal Lisa Pereira of Letty School.
Okay, now I had to tell a little white lie to get this person to come tonight. So it's kind of a surprise for her. Melanie? Melanie, come on up. I knew she wouldn't come if I told her, so... So the person I would like to recognize this evening has gone above and beyond her job description as an educational assistant this year. While the classroom teacher has been on leave since October, Melanie Carr has gone through four staff changes in the classroom. Melanie has been the one constant person for those students throughout the year and has been the backbone and support for the temporary placements that have come and gone. When we were left without anyone to substitute this February, Melanie offered to step up to the plate and cover the classroom herself. She has done all of this with a smile on her face and the most warm and caring temperament. As a parent herself, Melanie cares for all of her students as she would her own. And as a parent, I would feel most comfortable leaving my child in your care. As an administrator, I feel most fortunate to have a staff member who speaks so kindly to the students and who is energetic and creative in the classroom. Melanie is continuing her studies in teaching and hopes to obtain her teaching degree in the near future, even though it's been like 15 years, right, Melanie? Sorry, no, I'm just kidding, just kidding. But it would be my honor to have you on my teaching staff in the future. Thank you. So I'd like to acknowledge Melanie Carr.
Principal Stephanie Hoy will recognize several staff at East Taunton Elementary School.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here with my assistant principal, Suzie Delesio. We will be recognizing five outstanding staff members. I would love to see... Oh, they're coming with me, that's great. So many of you may or may not know that East Taunton Elementary houses is home to one of our district programs, the RISE program. And our students are primarily diagnosed with autism. And as we enter the month of April, what better time to appreciate three of our staff members from the RISE program? Because April is Autism Appreciation Month. So with that being said, there are a few of them that are very upset with me tonight that they're here. I heard about it for days. Especially Mrs. Borges. But I couldn't pass up the opportunity to really introduce them to all of you because they are just the most outstanding people in our building who are working with the most outstanding children. So starting off with Kaylee Silvera. Kaylee Silvera is brand-new almost to our Taunton Public School family. She's been in the district for about two years. And we are so very lucky to have recruited her from a neighboring district. She shows passion and compassion every day. She looks to, when adversity comes her way, she looks at it from a positive and always uplifting lens. Even on her toughest days, when I walk into her classroom, she's got a smile on her face. And when I ask her if there's anything I can do, she kindly says she's fine, even though some days I know she's not. So with that being said, I am one lucky principal to have her and our children are a bunch of lucky kids to have her, Kaylee Silvera. So here are the two staff members that are very upset with me. But I've told them that they're going to have to learn to get over it, so... First, Jules Ferrari. Now, her last name might sound a little familiar to you, and it should. And she did not tell her dad she was being recognized today. So I told her that I am going to have to make a phone call to him. Mr. Cabral might be doing that for us. Jules is an RBT in our district. She has been with us for several years. I have been honored to have her at East Taunton Elementary, primarily because I need her guidance for so many reasons. Often, I go to her just to ask for advice for any students in our building that are challenging. Not only does she help me with students that are in the program, but she goes above and beyond to give us advice for other students who might be having some tough moments. I have often found her in the classrooms of other teachers, general educators. Without being asked, she'll go to them and ask, "Do you need anything? Can I help you? I've noticed that this child might need some help. I might be able to assist." She does this all under the radar. She doesn't think I know, but I do. There are plenty of staff members who will come to talk to me about Jules every day. I would be remiss if I did not recognize her as one of the most important staff members we have in our building when it comes to caring for our children and offering us some very valuable advice. Jules Ferrari. Now on to Susan Borges, Sue, as most of us like to call her. Sue and I go way back. We worked together at Hopewell Elementary School years ago. So I, going to East Taunton Elementary, had the privilege of reuniting myself with Sue. She is an educational assistant in one of our RISE programs. She's instrumental in planning and assisting our students with pretty much everyday needs. Now, when I told her I was recognizing her, she said to me... Now, when I told her I was recognizing her, she said to me, "Stephanie, I don't want to be recognized, you're recognizing me for doing my job every day." And I said, "Sue, that is not true. You go above and beyond every single day. There is not one need that our children go without. There is not one need that her classroom teacher goes without," and her classroom teacher's here and she can attest to that. "There's not one need that our building goes without because of Sue." Sue will make crafts for our kids, she stays out late, or stays late at school to plan. She purchases things for our children with her own money, never looking for reimbursement. And our children just adore her. She has great relationships with her families, and so does Jules and Kaylee. So I am so grateful to this team of wonderful staff members that work with our amazing kids every day, and I salute to them. And I'll pass it on to Mrs. DeLassio.
Good evening, everyone, it is my pleasure to recognize alongside Mrs. Hoy and our East Taunton Elementary School community, our wonderful school nurses, Kiana Tavarez and Rosemary Mello. Like myself, they are new to the East Taunton building, and we New Bulldogs have to stick together in learning all about the building and the climate and the culture and the kids and everything. And so it has been such a wonderful experience working alongside them because as you all may know, nurses have a very special job in any building, especially the elementary school. They see quite an array of things that go on each and every day, and they have such kind, caring, nurturing hearts. We wanted to recognize them especially for some of the work that happened during COVID, they were quite instrumental. They led us through the uncertain times, and with their guidance and calm and caring and nurturing ways, we were a very successful team. They were available on weekends through texts and emails and always demonstrated a positive attitude, even on the days that we knew were challenging. We are very grateful for them and their care and concern for our school community and the work that they continue to do each and every day. And as I said before, it's a pleasure to have such a strong nurse team because we do rely on them every day, and they know the way in which we work as a school building, and they're there for us at every call, every radio call, and we couldn't thank them enough. We truly appreciate how hardworking our nurses are, so we thank you very much.
Okay, next, Principal Danielle Kurt from Benjamin Friedman Middle School will recognize some staff there.
Thank you for having us here tonight. Apparently, East Taunton and I had a lot in common when we chose to recognize our nurses as well, and we definitely could not get through COVID without these amazing women. So with me tonight, I have Mr. Menard and Ms. Green, who are going to also honor our wonderful nurses.
Ms. Green?
Good evening. As the world changed in an instant in what felt like forever away from normalcy, we were living in such uncertainty. Through all of the ups and downs, the one thing that has not changed is the hard-working and amazing nurses we have at Friedman Middle School. When we began the 2021-2022 school year, we returned to school as a whole student body, but it wasn't that simple. We had to remain socially distant, especially in the cafeteria. As the year began, our amazing nurses got right to work. They contact traced as needed, they made more phone calls home than they ever have, they comforted so many of our students who were not feeling well, all the while doing all the everyday jobs that they needed to do in order to keep the nurse's office running smoothly. Every day, they come to Friedman with a smile on their faces. You never see any stress from them, they are always consummate professionals. The students at Friedman know when they go to the nurse, they will see those friendly, comforting faces that make everyone feel better. Melissa, Rebecca, and Melinda, every day you show up at Friedman with a smile on your faces, ready to face the unknown of the day, you do this with kindness and patience. You've all gone above and beyond in these uncertain times. Thank you for keeping our students safe, you truly all are a gift to our school.
Principal Katie Decuta from Mulcahy Elementary School now will recognize her staff.
Good evening and thank you, tonight I have with me newly-appointed Assistant Principal Amanda Babola and my other Assistant Principal, Claudia Nichols, who has been with me for three years. Tonight, we are here to recognize Francisco Evra. I can't put into words, but I am trying, how impactful Francisco has been on our school community. Francisco has been with us for three years. After a very long, and I think he said intense, interview with me for a custodial position, Francisco was offered a job at Mulcahy, the old Mulcahy. Francisco went right to work in cleaning up our school and making it the shiniest penny that could possibly stand out in the city of Taunton, even though we were getting ready to open a new school. Francisco was an amazing person who he has greatly for our school, our staff, our students, and our community. Francisco is always working to ensure that our school, classrooms, hallways are clean and ready for our students every morning. He has a smile on his face every day I come in the front door. He comes in, he makes sure the playground is ready for our students, he goes to the kitchen to make sure that Nancy has everything she needs and all the equipment is up and working, and even the heat is at the right temperature. Francisco can be seen on the front sidewalk with his yellow vest on greeting students and handing out PBIS tickets. He's at the bus ramp greeting students with a smile. And Francisco on occasion has been seen with students walking in the hallway, those students that have been having a difficult day, and offering them a small job so they can get back to work and focus. He always has a smile no matter the circumstance, whether he is responding to a student that who has become ill in school, the ever-changing bathroom details that he has, or the often messy trash in the cafeteria. No matter the day, Francisco always approaches his job with a smile. Francisco did an outstanding job coordinating the closure of the old Mulcahy School with his custodial staff during the height of a pandemic. We moved into a new school, getting ready, cleaning, and welcoming an eager new staff of 144 people, and Francisco and his staff did not miss a beat. He was organized, detail-oriented, and cares immensely for every room, every staff member, and every person that walks through the door. Francisco has taken on many more things than most custodians have. He's been trained in state-of-the-art technology, state-of-the-art systems, and knows how they run. Francisco has a positive outlook, is there when we need translations for students and parents. He goes above and beyond every single day. He often puts his own needs last. We are extremely fortunate to have Francisco with us every single day. He is the most humble man that I have ever worked with, and I'm honored to be there every day with him. Thank you.
Thank you, it really fills us all with pride to see so many extraordinary people being recognized here in Taunton Public Schools, whether it's staff or our students. So this really is a special evening for all of us, and I think they really did save the best for last because now we have a very special recognition of someone who we have missed deeply since he has retired. Director of Student Services Kathy Perry will now recognize, and I'll let Kathy say it, will now recognize someone who's very special here in Taunton.
I say all the time, all the time, how fortunate we are to have the Taunton Police Department. I am the luckiest Director of Student Services. I'm able to work with truancy officers, the school resource officers, and they are an incredible... And one of them's texting me right now, talking to me. They're just, they never stop, whatever we ask them to do, they do. I am honored to be with Matt McCaffrey tonight. Sergeant Detective Matthew McCaffrey. It's been my distinct privilege to work alongside Sergeant McCaffrey for the past four years. Matt is the consummate professional and a Taunton icon. Matt has always been a true community police officer. He is not only respectful to the students and the families of Taunton, but he takes a most genuine concern with everyone that he encounters. Although you would be hard-pressed to find anyone in the city that does not know who Matt McCaffrey is, I thought I would share with you some details. Matt's top 10 list, these are probably the 10 things people do not know about Matt McCaffrey. Thanks to his amazing wife, Lee, who's with us tonight, and his two daughters, Molly and Madison, who flew out to Florida today, so unfortunately they couldn't be with us. I'm pleased to share with you the top 10 list of things you might not know about Matt McCaffrey. Number one, Pink is his favorite artist. Did you know that? All right, this one's my favorite.
You must have been talking to Molly.
I was, this one's my favorite. Matt starred in Pippin, the musical in high school, and he still knows all the choreography. Are we gonna, no? He prefers showering at the Y instead of his house. He loves a good deal, McDonald's two-for-four dollars sausage McMuffins, Ocean State Jaw Block crazy deals, and of course, the 99-cent coffee at Cumbes. He knows every word and every fact about the movie Jaws. He bikes the entire Cape Cod Canal every night, which is 14 miles, by the way. With his birthday so close to Christmas, December 21st, he will not accept birthday presents wrapped in Christmas wrapping paper. He cannot have his back to the door in a restaurant. That's one thing I did learn from all of my police officers. He watches TV on what sounds like the maximum volume. And finally, number 10. The number 10 thing you should know about Matt McCaffrey is that he has his 50-ton vessel captain's license. So as we bid this captain a fond farewell, we want you to know, Matt, that the Taunton Public Schools is a better place because of you.
Thank you. I was actually afraid she was gonna tell a story of... You know, we have to do a lot of home visits, and I had one home visit that really kind of choked me up, and I called her on the phone, I tried to get through it, next thing I know I was crying like a baby. So I thought that was the story she was gonna tell today. But we've had a lot of good times and bad times, and you know, when you go doing these home visits to houses, you don't know what, you know, you think everybody has a normal life until you walk into some of the houses and you see how some of these other people live. You know, I always thought everybody had a bed, and then once I started working as a police officer and as a truant officer for the school systems, you know, you realize that everybody doesn't live the same, you know. But anyways, it's been a pleasure to work for the city of Taunton that I grew up in. It was proud to service them, and I want to thank you, appreciate it.
Chairman Demello?
Thank you, Mayor. So this concludes our evening tonight, and I just want to thank everyone for being here with us, celebrating all the good that Taunton has to offer. And you know, when things go bad, they always hit the front page of the newspaper, but when things go good, they never show up in a newspaper or any social media outlets. So thank you all for being here tonight, for participating in everything that is good for the city of Taunton. My colleagues on the school committee work very hard to make sure that all the students have what they need, and if they don't have it, let us know, we're here for the students. Thank you so much, back to you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Demello, can we get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Amazing evening.
Motion.
You want an amazing evening?
Yes, motion made and seconded, all those in favor. Opposed, none opposed, so voted, thank you everyone, have a great evening.